I answered City of Groton because that's who we are.
Oh, it's not even plugged in.
Right, it's not.
Doesn't need to be?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, May 28, 2024. For the record, we, is a hybrid meeting, we're Zoom and we also have in-person in council chambers. So with that, Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Depo, Counselor Piazza, Counselor Sheffield, and Counselor Norris via Zoom are present.
Okay, thank you. Couple housekeeping things that I want to do. We have a pride flag raising on June 3 at 10 o'clock here at the municipal building, so you are all invited. And then the second thing is, I asked you guys to respond about the NAACP dinner. And I only have one response, so you need to give me a response quickly so that I can order tickets. All right, moving on, new business referrals. We're going to start with the Police Department. Chief? I know, I forgot to tell you. It's okay. All right, so the first one is police vehicle equipment.
So as you're aware, we're in the middle of, or it's been some time, but we did come to originally with replacement of some of our unmarked vehicles that were high mileage, very low years as far as 2006, 2008. So older vehicles, and they were rusted. So we did replace them, but it did not come with equipment. They do not require the same kind of extensive equipment that patrol vehicles require, but they do require some emergency lights and sirens in case we have to use them for emergency purposes. So with that being said, we are going to equip four of these vehicles with lights and sirens. These will be the interior ones, not the, not the light bars per se. We did go out for three quotes. We went to Communications Plus, MHQ, and Strobes &amp; More. And we selected Strobes &amp; More based on the equipment that they were giving us and the price that was presented, which is $14,494.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield?
So you said all four vehicles are going to be getting all this equipment, or it's going to be certain ones?
So it'll be all four vehicles. One of the things that wasn't done in the past is that the vehicles have to have 360 degrees of emergency lighting. So we will be adding side lighting to them where some of our unmarked, well, all of our existing unmarked now does not have side lighting. The reason why we do that is because there is occasion such as Sail Fest, for example, where everything in the fleet is used for an intersection, traffic control. So it's not just the marked units. So I do have to look at some of the safety lighting as far as that is concerned. So th- these vehicles will have interior lights, but, or, the side lights will be exterior, but the interior, the rest of them, for the rear deck and the front windshield, but it'll be visible from all areas.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing nine, I'll take a motion to move this to mayor and council meeting of June 3, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to the second, further discussion. Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, nuisance ordinance?
So, we don't ha- so there are a couple of new ordinances that are in the package tonight, and then there's one established one. The nuisance ordinance would be new to us. We did not reinvent the wheel on this. We actually reached out to some of our local municipalities to see what they have, the closest one and the easiest one, as far as I was concerned when I was reading these, was from Stonington. Stonington has a nuisance ordinance. The primary job of a nuisance ordinance is to identify residences and/or businesses that continue to be an issue for certain parts of the community, neighborhoods, streets, et cetera. Most of that has to do with noise, unwanted noise that comes from those locations. So this would add a nuisance ordinance for those establishments that were a chronic problem as far as complaints were, were concerned.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depo?
So if someone calls and complains about noise, what is our current procedure?
So right now, we operate under state statute, which is whether it's a disorder of conduct or breach of peace, whether it rises to that level, what kind of disturbance is it causing for the neighbors, is it reasonable, is it unreasonable, time of the day, et cetera. We don't have, I was just talking to building, we don't have, or inspector, we don't have a, a noise meter. So we have to go by the conditions or the environment that we find as far as reasonableness is concerned. But obviously, you know, there's a difference between 11 o'clock in the morning and 2 o'clock in the morning as far as playing radios or running lawn equipment or construction or barking dogs even. Barking dogs, if they're continuous and they go through the night, cause a disturbance for your neighbors. So that's something that we respond to. Usually, we're looking for compliance initially, and we do. You know, 99% of the, the time, we'll get compliance, knock on the door, tell them to stop it, they do. However, it's the repetitive type. We don't have a system for repetitive, other than writing the state infraction at, at some point, and identifying it through our records management system and then writing a state infraction for it. But this would set it up as an ordinance where it doesn't have to be the police, it could actually be the enforcement official that can do nuisance as well. So if we were sending him out not only to do blight that he does now, but also to talk about repetitive type issues, he could go out and issue a warning first and then enforcement after that if it was called for.
So I don't know what the impetus was for this, but I know a lot of residents have brought up that we don't have one, so I appreciate you doing the work on this. Because I think residents will be happy. It is one of the things that I hear feedback from sometimes. So I think it'll be, bless you. Bless you.
Bless you.
I think it'll be well received by the residents. I think it's a good idea, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sheffield?
I thought we did have a noise ordinance in one of the old...
Uh, we may, but it's probably on the list to be deleted.
Okay, I said, I said initially, I said, wait, I thought we had.
And this is not specifically a noise ordinance? It's a...
Correct.
It encompasses other things besides noise.
Right, this is character, intensity, duration, so it could be anything. Somebody continually leaves, you know, unwanted garbage in the yard where it becomes a nuisance, we keep going there, tell them to clean it up. Not only is that blight, but it's also a nuisance for the neighbors. Abandoned vehicles, again, yes, it's blight, but it, depending on the level of the offense, that could be a nuisance for individuals that live around that area.
I'll check that out and see if there's, I know, I thought we had had one, but I guess if, if it's, if it's old, I guess we can, yeah, I guess this would be the revised one, so.
One of the things that we're looking at is we're looking at ordinances. We've already, supposedly, the councils looked at ordinances and they fall into three categories: delete them, revise them, or rewrite them. And so we're in the process of slowly but surely, we're going to get to that, get those all up to date, updated. Any other questions or comments? Hearing nine, I'm sorry, Counselor Norris, I didn't see a hand. Go ahead.
Just a quick question, Chief. So, can you define nuisance again for me, please?
So it's, the noise is the primary that goes with it as far as unnecessary activity. So, you know, people out mowing the lawn at a reasonable hour, that's not a nuisance. That, that's a reasonable expectation for people to do that kind of work, just like if you have construction going on. But, now let's say you go ahead and you park a commercial vehicle in a residential neighborhood and that commercial vehicle is using a generator, or it's using a refrigeration device, or it's using something else that constantly running, and to keep that, whatever the contents of that truck are in a condition that needs to be in, then that, you know, if that prolongs, then that can be a nuisance because it's a nuisance for the residents as far as the noise level that that would create.
The reason why I ask is, this is just my, I guess, knowledge, is I didn't see a description of what a nuisance is in this ordinance. I was wondering, does it require a description of some sort?
So the majority of this has to do with the noise. So it, in section A, it talks about what the narrative is as regarding what the ordinance would cover. But, and it talks about, again, the character of the noise, the intensity, the duration, if it's detrimental to the quiet comfort, repose, life or health of others, and is reasonably capable of being performed during hours other than the hours as set forth above. What we're trying to do is keep quiet hours, right? So people rest, you know, they require home care, they require some kind of medication, they require some kind of care at home that is, that is over hours, that is after the hours that normal work is being performed, and as such, they are incapable of getting that sleep, that rest necessary. And, and it's a quality of life issue, right? So now we're dealing with something that is upsetting not only maybe an individual, but it's upsetting a group of individuals in the neighborhood.
So in a nutshell, can you please tell me the difference between this and a noise ordinance?
So for a noise ordinance, I require a meter. I don't have a meter. So, and that has a decibel level, right? So it has a decibel level that is, and usually it's somewhere around 50 to 65, but it's above the background noise that is created or normally present within an environment. That is what the, the noise ordinance usually deal with. It deals with the same times, six to nine, seven to 10, that's quite normal as far as that's concerned, but it has decibel levels laid out. We don't have the capability of testing for decibel levels.
Do we have a noise ordinance?
I have not looked at the noise ordinance. I don't believe so.
Did you say no?
Upon looking, I don't believe we do have an established noise ordinance.
Okay, did you hear that, Counselor Norris?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries. Okay, Chief, BYOB ordinance?
BYOB, again, this is a new one, so with establishments that may come into the city and asking about BYOB, we don't have anything that currently covers that. So, again, looking around, we're not going to reinvent the wheel. Groton Town has a fairly established one that works well. And honestly, the language in that meets what the liquor permit, if they were a liquor permitted establishment, it'd be the same thing. So it talks about hours of operation, it talks about intoxicated individuals, it talks about minors, and then you can't offer alcohol as a prize for a raffle or anything else, contest at an establishment that is a BYOB. It does allow the, the city to set the fine on this, and again, taking language from Groton Town, thank you to Groton Town on this. It would be $250 fine for this.
Any questions on this, this ordinance? Deputy Mayor Depo?
Can I actually make a comment about the last one?
Sure.
I just looked it up, and we do have some ordinances about nuisance and noise. They're all from 1904. And one of them is about swearing in public, I believe, and playing instruments in the street. None of them have hours or really pertain to anything current, so.
And that goes back to my original comment, this is going to be deleted.
Yeah.
So because it's not relative, relevant to today.
Right.
But thank you for evaluating, for looking at it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Concerning the BYOB ordinance, so, is it correct that because we don't have one, someone could open a BYOB establishment and not? How, how does that work?
No, because you don't require a liquor permit for a BYOB, so you could just announce it, I have a BYOB.
Okay. I, I definitely am in favor of, of putting an ordinance in place. Obviously, we need rules for that type of establishment. So, is this, you said this echoes what the town of Groton?
Correct.
Has?
Correct.
Ian, have you talked to the police department, like the, they think that's sufficient?
Mm-mm, I haven't, I haven't reached out to them.
The only reason I'm asking is, obviously, it's between the hours of 12 a.m. and 10 a.m., and I'm just curious if they've found that effective?
When, when I talked to town manager Bert, town manager Bert said this was one of the things that they did in order to get their arms around an establishment that was problematic. And he highly recommended this, so I asked the chief to take a look at it, and we're here before you today.
No, I definitely think, I just was curious if the 12 a.m., if that's like standard across the board, or?
So, I mean, most permitted places go, unless our restaurant, which will close around, you know, 11 o'clock or midnight, most liquor permit places will go till 2 o'clock in the morning if it's a weekend, right? So this would reduce those hours in these type of establishments with the restriction being that it has to be two hours shorter. And again, no language in place means it's whatever they want to do.
Right. Okay. I, I, again, I think this is a good idea. I think we need it, obviously, in place, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sheffield?
So the deadline is 12 a.m., 12 midnight?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's Monday through?
That's every day.
Every day, seven days, seven days, okay.
Yep.
Counselor Piazza?
Thank you. So where it says, whereas this ordinance was published in the day, the newspaper having general circulation in the city of Groton on, there's nothing to follow, and not everybody gets the day, so is that going to stay, or, or is this just for a note, or what is this?
Do you want to go into ordinances, or you want me to?
So that's written in, so in all ordinances, they have to be published twice. The day is the biggest circulated newspaper in our area, so that's the one that we're going to put it in. But it will be published on our website, at my office, anywhere that a resident would normally try to see something like, like that, they could always get a copy from the clerk's office. But it has to be written on the ordinance that it was published at least one place.
And that's part of CGS, right?
That it, that it's published in a newspaper of general circulation, yes.
And could that be, have been something like the, what do we call it now, the Mystic Times, used to be Groton Times, that everybody gets in their mailbox, used to be on Mondays, now Thursdays?
It could, I, I do believe those, I do believe those local papers do suffice, do satisfy that. I haven't looked into, because we don't have an account with that particular newspaper. It's something that I would like to do and speak with the marketing manager, perhaps mayor's assistant could help with that, to try to see if they're price-wise, would be cost-effective.
Right, because I know, you know, everybody gets theirs in their mailbox.
Well, we can look at that, but in general, in the past, we have used the day because of the general circulation of the day, they are the largest newspaper around. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing nine, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to the second, any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries. All right, blight ordinance?
Thank you, Mayor. So this one didn't actually require a lot of work. It's pretty robust as it is. What we did want to do is go through and you'll see where the red, and I left the corrected copy, so you could see what we did. But the red are, in section one, include some additional references to the Connecticut general statutes that we're operating under. Because before, it was the 148(c)(7), which was the primary, but there's a few others in there, 12-146, 7-148(b), and then 7-152(c). So that we did add. If you skip down to section three, I added trailer in there, because trailer was not originally part of the definition of abandoned motor vehicle, marine vessel, it talked about vessels and, and vehicles being left on the street, but not trailers. So I thought that that was important to add. And again, that's not outside the norm, that is in other ordinances that we can find for abandoned vehicles. The definition there for the abandoned, inoper- unregistered vehicle under definitions, that's actually in the narrative of the body of the ordinance, but it wasn't in the definition, so I took it again out of the narrative and put that in there, just to reiterate that that's what the, that's what the definitions are. And then the, I added enforcement officer as far as able to, because we do have the blight officer, as far as able to enforce these. And then going through and asking the enforcement, the blight officer if, what other additions he wanted to make. If we look at section C, all the way down on F, he wanted to add the hedge shrub tree overgrowth that impedes line of sight, because that was not an original part of this. And pretty much everything else is ju, well, not pretty much, everything else is, is grammar-related as far, or addressing fonts, et cetera. That's why it's marked in blue as opposed to red, but the changes are all on pages one and two of the ordinances.
So we were due to evaluate this. Town just recently updated theirs based on the meeting that I saw. I asked, they were, we were in the process, we were going to bring this to you last month, and I asked Chief and Glenn to take a look at it again, to look at the towns, to see if there's anything we wanted to pull from there. Ours was already very robust, and we really didn't need to do a whole lot except update the CGS. The, the hedge line of sight issue has been a problem in the past, and we've had to get people to cut it, cut the hedges back so that you can see in order to, when you're pouring into traffic. Deputy Mayor Depo?
Counselor Norris has a second.
I'm sorry, Counselor Norris?
Uh, thank you. Just a quick question, so hypothetical, Chief, what do we do here if, let's say we have a senior that does have a blight issue and is something as simple as grass is too tall or schmoes are all grown and cannot afford the cost herself? Are there any provisions within the city, having in terms of volunteers or dollars within the budget, to help in that situation?
Yeah, so I know that Glenn in the past has reached out to towns' senior services, because that's our umbrella-type organization to go to as far as assistance is concerned. If they can get a volunteer, Boy Scouts, neighborhood, something, he will work with that senior as far as cleanup is concerned. We've had hoarding issues in the past with seniors. He's arranged for dumpsters to be delivered there at a reduced cost and, and cleanup to take place. So it's, I mean, we don't go in there heavy-handed right up, i- if there's a reason for it and we can address it, then we'll try to get the help and assistance that we can. Glenn is very good at working with the area services, whether that's health, or like I said, senior services, social services, et cetera, to try and get some additional assistance. He's successful in getting reduced prices for individuals if it's a hardship for them. And it's somebody, he's an individual that, that works with our members in the community to get this done.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3, 2024.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to the second, any further discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, Scott? So, building and zoning department, the first is the fee policy ordinance. Do you want to walk us through this? Or walk the council through this? I've already been walked through, but.
Yeah, so, we were making changes to the, the ordinance that we have in place. One of the reasons why is the permit link that we use for the services for our, their fee is going up starting July 1, so we wanted to address that issue now. On top of it, we wanted to move all of the fees that were originally in the ordinance to a resolution, so that down the road, it would be, I guess, easier to go in and adjust the fees as increases happen. And with that, we, we came up with a, a few other fees that we, that we wanted to put in there, which is going to be a zoning fee, a change of tenant form, so if you have a new business move into a, an empty storefront, it's a fee, because when I was at the town of Groton, it was the same, similar, same thing that they had, change of tenant form, flat fee, so it basically, basically got, you know, the information of who that person or company was, so that we knew, you know, how we could tell them what they needed to, to go forward, as far as like if they had to do anything to the building. It was a change of use, which kind of gets into a lot of other things that they might have to do, so it was kind of keeping track of who was coming and who was going, so.
Sorry. And let's see, we never, we, we put in for a zoning fee, which all the towns, I, we checked around here, southeastern Connecticut, all towns charge a zoning fee. So if someone was going to do anything to their property, you know, it has to go through zoning first, and then once that gets approved, and they could apply for their building permit. So we wanted to put that in there. So, I mean...
Questions or comments on this ordinance? Counselor Norris, or Counselor Norris, sorry. Counselor Sheffield?
Thank, I see a different numbers, I guess, from the markup to the printout on the resolution. I see $42, and on the markup, I see $40 for building permit and demolition fee for the first $1,000.
Yeah.
So it's a 40?
It was, it's $40 now.
Okay.
And going forward as of July 1, it's going to go to $42?
$42, okay.
Because there's a 20% increase from the permit link. Which is $2 per permit.
Okay.
More.
Deputy Mayor Depo?
So, is there, so the change of tenant permit fee, is that only for certain commercial buildings?
Uh, no, it would be for any, any commercial, anybody that was wanting to go in and start, you know, a business that was going to go into a storefront.
What about like a multifamily property?
No, wouldn't have nothing to do with like a, a residential.
But, so someone looking at our ordinance, how would they know that?
We could go in and, and add language so that it specifies, you know, that it's for commercial businesses?
Just because to, to me, it, it looks like it could be a little confusing, and as a person who, I, I always try to follow all the rules, I would look at that and go, oh no, did I miss something?
So, because we clean this up for the next, by?
Yeah.
For the next time?
Yeah, we can.
Go ahead, please. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, ju, on that, that's the only thing on that, to me, to differentiate between like storefront commercial versus residential commercial, or I don't know what you would technically call that, but, because it's still, does that count as commercial?
What's that?
A multifamily, even, like if someone's running it as a business.
It's commercial in the eyes of the building code, but it's not, yeah, but in, you know, the eyes of like, you know, it's, it's always a residential place and people are coming and going, but, you know, we don't, it's never changing, but, you know, you have a new, an empty storefront and it's been empty for, you know, a year or so, and then all of a sudden, somebody wants to come in and put a business in there of some kind, it's just a way for us to, you know, monitor that and make sure that, you know, they're doing everything that they need to do.
Right.
To make sure that, you know.
That 100% makes sense.
Right.
Love that.
But we'll just clean up that language and...
But I, yeah, just to make it clear that, so like homeowners or people who own a multifamily aren't thinking that they have to do that now.
Well, and the other, the other concern that I have, since you've brought this up, is the management of multifamilies would be horrendous in trying to identify and manage this, whereas with their storefronts, we, you know, they're, they're, there's a, well, any of these are finite, but there's a much smaller number in order to manage. So we'll get the language. So what we could do is we can accept this language? And then make the change to, for the commercials, so the council can see that?
Yep.
At the next meeting. Any other questions or com, I'm sorry, please continue.
That's okay. And then, so if we're adding a fee for a zoning permit, so that goes through planning and zoning?
The zoning goes through the... The zoning goes through the building and zoning department as far as the zoning fee.
But does that go through, well, now I'm confused. Because planning and zoning is separate from building and zoning.
Well, if you look at the way that, yeah, look at the way the city of Groton is designed, it is building and zoning and then planning.
Okay.
So something sometimes needs to go through zoning, which is just our department versus something that needs to go to planning and zoning for approval for, you know, which usually is like, has to do with the site or whatever may be going on there. But like, if someone was going to put a shed in their backyard, they come through us and get zoning.
So things that require, are going to require zoning permit fees, those don't involve the planner?
Not necessarily, but, I mean, the planning is usually like, you know, if an entity is going to go in and build a big apartment complex, they got to go through planning and zoning first to build that. And they get their approval, you know, go through that process and get approval for the site plan and all that. And then on, and then would it come back to zoning for, on our side? I don't know. That would be a good question, you know, does it? Because if it's gone through planning and zoning and they approved it, then does it need to come before our eyes to?
So the reason that I'm asking that is that the permit fees, building permit fees, come back to your department as a source of revenue.
Mm-hmm.
So if the zoning permit fees are for zoning work, is it only zoning work that goes through building? Or is it something that goes through like the planning and zoning committee? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so like I said, like if someone was going to, you know, build a house or do an addition, put a shed in the yard, you know, do some kind of upgrade to their property where they're going to expand on their property, then it goes through, it would go through us through zoning.
Okay.
That wouldn't go through the planning department.
So this is not for fee, any fees related to planning and zoning?
No, that would, that's totally separate.
That's all I just wanted.
Okay.
This is all related to this department. Any other question? Questions or comments?
My only other comment.
You're still on the floor.
Thank you, is, I think, because I read this earlier. So previously, if someone didn't complete their work, did they get a refund for their permit? Or how did that work? Because
Well, the.
I think I'm confused by the, how the changes are written in here. So it says 75%. So we're removing the 75% and putting a percentage?
No, the permit refund policy, it stays the same. I don't know if you have.
I have red and blue, so now I'm confused.
So this is the ordinance.
Yep.
And then this is a resolution. We're, we're going to go to the resolution here in a minute, but.
Oh, I was looking at the ordinance.
Okay. Let's get, all right, where are you in the ordinance so we can get Scott to the same point?
Yeah, so the refund policy for permits in the ordinance we're looking at?
Yes. Oh, is that because you want to take the number out of the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Try to take any language that was in the ordinance as far as numbers or percentages. We say that there's a percentage, but we don't say what it is until you go to the resolution.
Okay, so we're, but we're not changing that amount?
No.
Okay. That's all my questions, I think.
Councilor Norris, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think, thank you for answering what I asked you the question that I was kind of puzzled on. But is the goal here for a minimum numbers, for example, 75%, 2% for fees out of the ordinance and after only appear in the resolution? Because I'm trying to understand which one you're trying to do.
Okay, so one of the things that we're going to be doing is for ordinances in the future, we're going to be removing the numbers, the amounts out of the ordinance and put it in a resolution because it's easier to change a resolution than it is to change an ordinance.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I have another question. So if you could explain this to me in layman's terms, please. All zoning permits will be assessed based on zoning regulations. What does that mean to a layperson?
So it would be, like I said, any, anytime that someone's going to do something to their property that would expand the footprint or add something new that doesn't already exist on the property. So like I said, an addition, which could be an addition that, you know, would be livable or a deck or a shed. So I, you know, if we need to put down, you know, terms as far as what things would fall under the zoning permit, I guess we could list those, if that's more helpful.
I don't know if that's necessary. I was just trying to, so if someone was to ask that question, is, you know, where would you direct them to the answer?
Well, we would, we would determine that whatever it is that they, the question was that was asked, based on what they're going to do, we would let them know that they would need a zoning permit first. So if someone wanted to put a fence on their property, you know, right now, you know, you don't need a, you don't need a building permit for a fence. It's, it's got to be over seven feet tall to get a building permit.
Okay. All right. And here's my last question, and also, so I'm trying to understand, there will be a fee for any permit that has no action between inspection for more than 110 days, regardless of reason why?
Yeah, that's written in, that's in the state statute in our building code. So if it goes more than 180 days without inspection or any work being done, then it's, you know, it basically, you know, it's not active anymore, right?
That fee is based on a thousand per bounty?
Nope, it's just a flat fee of $25 to reinstate it. It doesn't matter what amount the permit originally was. It's just a flat fee. It was the same fee that we had at the town of Groton.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, permit fee schedule? So this is all new.
Yes, this is based on what was in the ordinance that's existing to the new fees that we're going to add going forward. So I just, you know, put it together here so that everything is in this one, in the resolution as far as what, you know, fees will be charged based on what the person is going to be doing.
Okay, questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
Can you explain real quick what a zoning compliance letter is?
A zoning compliance letter, that's already something that we have now. And if someone is going to buy a property, they want, they call up sometimes to ask for a zoning compliance letter to make sure that there's no encumbrances on the property, if there's any violations, or if there's any outstanding permits. So we provide that for them so they, you know, they're not going to have anything, come back and get them after they buy it and find out there was something.
Right, sometimes they need that in order to get, in order to get a lender to agree.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
All right, Ron, you're up next. So we'll go to Groton Utilities.
Yeah.
And you guys can share the mic as needed.
Yep.
All right, the first one is Springbrook Annual Maintenance and Support.
The utility commission next month is on Juneteenth, so it's not going to happen. And we moved our annual, our annual renewals, our annual purchases up to this month, and we're processing them a month early this year. And the first one is Springbrooks. This is an annual expense for supporting both city finance, GU finance, and actually Bozer Light and Power also. So all those costs come right through the utility.
So this is our annual maintenance program?
Right. It's the annual software fee. You have to pay it in order to use the software.
Okay, any questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield?
Is the price the same as last year or has it gone up?
It went up about 5%.
Oh, 5%, okay.
Yeah, most of, all the software went up about 4% to 6% rate in that realm. And that's been what we're seeing right across the board.
So we could probably expect that possibly, you know, year after year could be increases probably.
Pretty much.
Okay.
And I've never seen it be less than three yet.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Councilor Norris?
So just heard, or I just heard that the fee went up across the middle of 5%. Now, this is for fiscal year '25, correct?
Yes, sir.
So did we anticipate that 5% increase in '25 budget?
Yes, we did.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, City Works?
This is very similar. This is the software fees for the City Works platform. The City Works platform currently runs across the city. It's supporting the Department of Public Works. Also, the Water Department is where, we will begin to roll out in the Electric Department in about a year and a half to two years. So this is the annual maintenance fee for that. City Works is a GIA, GIS-based, computer-based maintenance management program.
Any questions or comments on City Works? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Harris Computer Systems?
This one's a little different than the last two. This, this is our customer information system. If we remember back a couple of years ago, we used to be able to access bills online. And due to the software going out of date, we were unable to keep that portal open due to security problems. So this is the up, this is paying for the upgrade to our Harris system to start the process of moving to the cloud and to bring that billing system back online so that people can see their bills online, pay them online, and actually get e-bills via email or logging in and getting their bills. So that has, this has been an active topic with this, in this forum before. And this will support the whole company.
Okay, Councilor Norris?
I just wanted to say thank you for the GU staff. This is a perfect example of understanding the customers, hearing the council, and our hopes and desires for customer service. They bring back what you did, so I commend you on that. Thank you very much. The next step on this, only because I've seen it a couple of places, will the software allow the customer to see their real time at the moment usage and bill?
They will be, the way that the automated meter reading system is, there's a delay. I'm unsure if you will be able to see since the last bill went out or if you'll be able to get into the meter sense system to see a couple of days ago. But you certainly won't be able to see, because we, we can't even see, you know, within a couple of days.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Devoe?
Just to echo what Councilor Norris said, this is something that I have bugged you about because I've had residents ask for it a lot. Can you, I agree also, it would be great if people could see their usage, even if it's not in real time. Can you update us even by email and just confirm whether they'll be able to see, even if it's like three days ago or five days ago, or the usage, if that's a possibility?
Yes, I will, I'll definitely ask.
Because I'm just curious, and because people are going to ask, obviously, because we thought to ask. I'm sure residents will ask, and that would be nice to know, especially with everything, inflation and everything going up. I know people sometimes would like to see mid-month what their usage looks like, and maybe they cut down for the second half of the month to save a little money or whatever. That would be great if we had that capability. But again, I also am happy that we're getting this capability because a lot of people, a lot of residents were asking for it, so thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for all this. Something I've brought up many times, because before we were able to access our usage. So was it changing from that program that was carrying it to something else? Was it over to Harris and then we're upgrading it now and going back into it? Because I used to be able to go in, type in my address, blah, 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 my account number, and see my usage. And I was like, well, okay, so last month what I was doing, and then I could look at my, well, I'm using too much water, more than I did last time, so even go back annually, because it shows annually your usage. But that stopped, and I remember calling here and saying, is there, they just kept saying there was a glitch in the system. So was it changing software that kind of flushed that out and now we're working back on that, or?
They, they finally upgraded the software to a cloud base, and they call, they call it Silver Blaze, actually. And that's allowing the Harris system to come back online with live, you know, getting your bills and you, looking at the usage history.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Calgon? Carbon, the carbon rather?
This is actually an annual, every year we need to replace one of the Granya activated carbon filter beds. So this is the one budgeted for the upcoming year, and we need to get it on order to lock the price in the, we will not be changing it until the fall. However, they said if we cut them a purchase order now, they'll lock in the price. And last year, the price on this went up substantially, and currently they're holding last year's price.
Okay, questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Devoe?
I just want to say thank you for bringing that early and for doing that, and thank you for doing all of these early. I know that it's like a scheduling puzzle, getting these to us and then to the commission and then with all the other things in Juneteenth. So I know it was extra work to get all this, these done early, so thank you for that. And it's nice that we'll be saving a little money because it's, it's quite the expense of the maintenance for all these things. So wherever we can save is good, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So one day, you were saying before that the price went up. Is this, is the price going up due to seasonal, because we do the filters in a certain time during the year? Or is it just a matter of manufacturing increases?
I mean, over the last couple of years, we've increased all the chemicals, the filter beds. We've had giant, I don't know if you want to call it inflation, but it's definitely increased in trucking to get things here, probably due to the diesel and also in the, just the cost to get anything done in general. I mean, we've seen it on the capital side, I mean, even like that Seawall project, look at the prices, they're going crazy.
Right, okay.
This was just general inflation.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Norris?
Just a quick question. So this will replace carbon in one of the filter beds or multiple?
One. This is one bed for this year and we do one bed each year.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of June third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention motion carries. Okay. Jengris Ford?
Okay. This request is to replace an existing two thousand and nine F-550. The truck is utilized by the distribution team, so water and sewer. Uh, the existing truck is at its end of life. So the engine, um, and transmission are both to the point where they both need replacement and to do so would cost nearly as much as the truck. It's currently offline. It came to an abrupt halt. We're currently utilizing a van and limping by with that. We have, we have utilized the state bid list. Jengris Ford is on that. And it's an emergency purchase. It's critical to operations. And the current request for the price is a hundred and forty-six thousand, two ninety-three, eighty-four cents. That includes the cab, chassis, a utility bed on the back, as well as a crane that'll help lift equipment off the truck.
Any questions or comments on this motion? Uh, Counselor Piazza? And then Counselor Norris, I'll come to you in a moment.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let's see. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see it. It's a two thousand and nine vehicle or replaced?
Yeah, the existing one is, correct.
And this one will be?
Uh, twenty twenty-four. They have one right on the lot for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Norris?
Thank you, sir. Um, gentlemen, why do we need a ten percent contingency on this?
We typically add them in for the fleet vehicles. We may find that we need an additional piece of equipment or something that goes along with it that we overlooked on the bid process. It's truly just a safety valve. Normally will not be utilized, but it's, instead of having to come back before the council like requests more, we'll put a safety on it and that's what this will be utilized for.
Yeah, it, and we did buy a truck. In the, that's because of experience. We bought a truck in the past and, um, it ended up changing, the price changed a little bit up before it was delivered due to a change in the cab or a change in the body or something. The body became unavailable. So it went up a little bit and we had to go through the whole process again. So it's kind of a lessons learned.
Counselor Sheffield?
Since this is being paid with cash available, um, will this, uh, have a negative impact on our reserves, on cash for water, uh, with this purchase?
The answer is yes. It's coming out of cash reserves.
Okay.
You didn't answer the question. Ask your question again.
The impact after the purchase, will it, you know, deplete our, uh, you know, significantly, will we?
The, uh, water has approximately two, two and a half million dollars cash reserves right now.
Okay.
So it is, it does impact it in anything to the water company. I'm not going to say it doesn't impact the water company because everything's expensive and, um, we don't want to spend an extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
But we're, we're still above, we're still, you know, in the, in the black. We're not, you know, wouldn't put us in a crisis situation. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Norris?
I was just gonna say, um, I, I feel a little uncomfortable with this ten percent contingency. I can appreciate that, you know, because after all of what the dealership says, what the cost is today, we go back tomorrow. They go, oh, we want another two hundred bucks. Um, I, if, uh, if you don't know what you want on this truck by now, oh, and, and you may change your mind over the next week. But, but that's a little concerning to me to have a plan here. But I just want to say I'm comfortable with ten percent contingency. That's it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Can you clarify the issue before with the other vehicle where we ordered it and needed different equipment on it?
When it, so the aftermarket equipment such as the crane and the, the body that they put on to the back of the truck, if they don't have the exact one that was quoted available, they might go to a slightly different version that would be plus or minus a hundred dollars here and there. It's not that they don't know exactly what they want on the truck. It's just that that exact model or part, to put all the parts on the back, it changed when they built one of the little bucket trucks that we bought. And it ended up going up a fairly small amount. It was only on a, I think those trucks were a hundred and sixty thousand dollars each. And it went up like four hundred dollars. And then we went back through the process to get it approved and this is back a few years. Or when we got delivery, the invoice actually was different and it was higher. And they didn't even really tell us until we took delivery. So it was like that, I mean, that's what happened.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
So would it maybe be reasonable in this situation? I know that normally ten percent contingency is our standard. But in this type of situation, would it maybe be, uh, feasible to do a five percent contingency or something a little bit smaller? Because ten percent does seem like a lot for this kind of contingency.
So you're absolutely fine with that. So they have the cabin chassis on the lot. And like Ron made mention, they need to assemble it. I think five percent will definitely cover that. So if you're content with that, I'll, we'll revise this to five percent as a contingency.
Counselor Norris, did you hear the five percent?
Yes, I did.
Would you be okay with that or are you looking to remove the total contingency?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right. So let's revise that. Let's do the math real quick.
That'll go one half of the thirteen thousand, two ninety-nine, forty-four. Correct?
Well, yes. Okay. What number is that? Because we're gonna need, we're gonna update.
So thirteen, two ninety-nine, point forty-four, times fifty percent.
Six thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
I'm sorry, six thousand what?
Six, six, four, nine point seven.
Six, six, four, nine point seven. Okay. And that puts the total request at?
Hundred thirty-nine, six, six, six forty-four, twelve cents.
Okay. So the contingency is five percent and that's six, six, four, nine point seven zero?
Six, four, four.
One thirty-nine, six.
Hold on, whoa, 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 whoa. You said the five percent is six, six, four, nine, seventy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that what you said? Isn't that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. So the, so I'm going through all the changes. Five percent, that puts it at six, six, four, nine point seven. And then the total request is one, three, nine, six, four, four, point one, two.
Correct.
Okay. We will get that updated, included in the language. Okay. So, uh, is everybody up, is everybody up to speed on what that amount is? Is there any further discussion on this? Counselor Piazza?
So, I mean, if we don't use this contingency, it goes back to available cash.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council of June third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention motion carries. Okay. Altech?
Okay. Second vehicle is the Digger Derek. That is the large truck that you see Grattan Utilities drive around with. It has the auger bit on it. That's what we utilize to set new power poles. Okay? The existing truck is a two thousand and twelve. It's an international cabin chassis with the Altech rear on it. It's, it's nearing end of life, uh, becoming problematic. We are looking to purchase a brand-new unit. We put the, we put a bid out. We asked for bids. Actually, we've got four bids in on the vehicle. And the first bid was from Q's Freightliner Cabin Chassis. It was good there. Versa Lift Unit, we've had problems with those. They do not provide any service to the vehicle. We'd have to get an external company to work on the vehicle for us. They would not accept the trade on the vehicle. That price was four thirteen, nine ninety-six. The second bid was from Kylie. They were unable to, they provided a truck, but it was a smaller version of the truck. It was unacceptable. It did not meet the bid specs. The third truck was from Custom Truck, One Source. They did meet the bid specs, but their organization is a Kansas City-based, uh, organization. Unfortunately, they do not service locally. If we have problems with the truck, it'll have to go to Kansas City. That truly was not going to be realistic. Uh, we don't have a, currently have a relationship with them. They also did not take a trade-in value. And the preferred choice is Altech Incorporated. They did meet the bid specs. They're Massachusetts-based. They have a mobile fleet service that can be provided, that will provide onsite service to us as needed. It's also the Freightliner Cabin Chassis, the M-two one oh six, which is exactly what we want. We've had a prior relationship with them and it's been very successful. They will take the trade of the old vehicle for us. The final cost of that vehicle is four thirty-four, five twenty-three and zero cents.
Five twenty-three or nine twenty-three?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Four, no. Final cost is four thirty-four, five twenty-three and zero cents.
That's not what this says.
Oh, so four, okay.
This says four thirty-four, nine twenty-three.
They have the exact minus one digit on both. I would say four thirty-four, nine twenty-three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we'll work from there. All right. And then the ten percent contingency, let's have that same discussion.
There's, uh, no ten percent discussion, uh, contingency in there yet, right? Do we have it?
There's a ten percent contingency right in front of me.
Okay. And it wasn't put on the resolution, I don't think. Or is that what brought it up to four hundred and, four hundred dollars? That's not it. No. I don't have a contingency on the resolution from Mayor.
Yeah. So the, the resolution was four seventy-eight, four fifteen, thirty, just like the, um,
And that.
Action form. You actually have the draft.
Okay.
You have the draft that you wrote.
Okay. So that value, that ten percent contingency is already inside of that price, correct? Correct. They didn't break it out.
Okay. So my question is, same discussion we had on the previous, about ten percent versus five percent on the contingency?
Your call, Ron. I, you know, five percent, I think it's, it's an expensive truck. Again, this truck has to be built.
And once we have this number, I'll turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor Depot.
You said it has to be built?
Yeah. Yeah.
And if the council wants us, we can, we can reduce it.
All right. Then I'll hold on that. Uh, I'll table that until Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
So, in your opinion, would a five percent contingency be sufficient for any foreseeable issues on this truck?
I would say yes. At that value. So we have to figure out what the five percent's gonna be.
Five percent is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, forty-six dollars and fifteen cents.
Okay. What was that number again? Twenty-one what?
Thank you for doing that.
Twenty-one thousand, seven forty-six, fifteen.
Thank you for looking that up.
Okay. And that takes the total to four fifty-six, six, six, nine point one five.
Ron's also calculating. I'll double check with him. Just to make sure my numbers are.
Understand. All right. So the contingency of five percent is two one, seven, four, six point one five. Did you get that? Takes us to a total value of four, five, six, 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 nine point one five?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So for the council, we're gonna go with a five percent contingency. The five percent contingency is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, forty-six dollars and fifteen cents, which takes the total request to four hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Deputy Mayor Depot, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. The only other thing that I wanted to say is, um, I really like this bu, uh, bulleted summary. Because obviously when you're here, we can ask you questions, but when I'm prepping for the meeting, this is really helpful to have this type of information and like the similar things for each, um, quote. Especially for something like this. I have never, uh, owned a Derek truck, so I don't know what the differences between vendors are. You know, even if you, if you came to me with a regular truck, I could tell you what I look for in a regular truck, but, um, so I find the bullets very, uh, helpful when prepping. So thank you.
We'll try to utilize that every, each time going forward. I like that as well.
Counselor Sheffield, did you have a question?
Quickly, now, the difference, like I said, now this is a budgeted item compared to, so the money is clearly available.
Capital purchase.
Okay, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Norris, did you have a comment or a question? I saw your hand at one point.
I, I agree with it. Deputy Mayor asked a question.
Okay. Got it? Any, Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I, I like the bids also, uh, planned out, but I always, um, look at safety-wise. So I think with safety being number one, when we look at bids, I think this is a good purchase to go with this company because service, if there's anything, but also two, it has the specs that you're looking for, which to me lends to safety.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? May I take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of June third, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstention motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Onto the last item. Uh, this is the Mystic Falcons has asked for a donation. We left it open. But I wanted, there's two pieces of information that you have. The one piece that was in your packet shows the history of what we've donated to them. And then the second piece, which was handed out to you, is this year's number. And so we do have room, I think thirty-four is what that is.
Uh, that's how much we've spent. So we have sixteen hundred.
So we have sixteen hundred left. And their values are five hundred, seven fifty, and a, and a thousand. So I will, so in the resolution, I'll take a number from the council. Deputy Mayor Depot?
I, well, I have a couple of questions. So we are nearing the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
Do we have any other, um, organizations that have reached out as of right now?
There, there's none in our office and none with the clerk.
So my other question is, uh, does the ordinance say that we have to give this money to organizations that apply for it? I didn't think of this before, but can the council just give the money to, can we just pick someone so that we're not? Because we, we never spend the whole thing.
So if the council, I'll go back and look at the ordinance, but I think the council can have that authorization. If the council comes up with a group that they, that they think, we can certainly, uh, write a resolution for it and then spend the money. Because you're right, it's been several years since we spent all the money.
And part of the reason I'm looking at that is, you know, we've got some that apply frequently, but some, um, for example, we haven't donated to steps since twenty twenty-one. So I'm just looking at, maybe we go back into organizations that we all know do good in the community, but maybe this year they didn't have time to apply or, you know, came off their list or they're something so that we're, we're actually donating all five thousand dollars to local organizations, which is the intent of that ordinance.
Absolutely.
Um, instead of having it, because it just goes back into the general fund for next year. And I feel like that's kind of a waste. Um, it, it's not a huge amount of money. So, um, my preference would be, you know, last time we donated to the Grattan Mystic Falcons, we donated the most, the thousand dollars, which I think we should do because we have sixteen hundred left. And I believe that we did it on the, um, contingency that the two children, that our scholarship sponsors be city kids.
We did.
Um, so I would propose that we do that again.
So two silver for city kids.
Well, it would be, what do you mean? It would be platinum, wouldn't it? Platinum is a thousand.
If you, does this, oh, is this? If you, does this, oh, it does for two kids. Never mind.
Yep.
Yeah, we can go to the platinum. I was looking at if it was for one, never mind. So, the two kids, we can do. Okay, so it's a thousand dollars.
That would be my proposal, I think.
Okay.
And then if we can confirm about the resolution or the ordinance about the remaining money, um, if maybe the next, uh, committee of the whole, if other councils have ideas of?
No, well.
What do you mean?
Oh, the next committee of the whole. That's true. That's the second Tuesday, or second Monday.
Right, so we're still in this fiscal year.
Yeah, hold on. Is, is council okay with STEPS? If I can go back and look, uh, and see what the ordinance says and just bring you a, a resolution on the 3rd?
Well, my issue is, are they going to ask, request for the money? Because like I said, if we're just gonna give money away and let's say maybe they don't need the money and they're just handing it out, that, that would be my concern. Uh, I would prefer a request more than just, let's just send the money out. That would be my issue, but, um, normally if, you know, they would come to us if they needed a request, so, um, and again, whatever doesn't get spent does go into the general fund, so it's not, you know, it hasn't disappeared. They can always ask at some point, so I don't see, uh, an urgency that we have to.
There's no urgency, however, comma. If you want to spend the money this year, it needs to be obligated before 30 June.
Right.
So, if we want to, uh...
I mean, if someone wants to reach out, sure, you know.
Okay.
You know, if a council wants to reach out, if Deputy Mayor wants to reach out to one of those organizations to see if they need something, that's, um, you know, I'm gonna agree with that, but I would like to, uh, make sure that, you know, there's a, some sort of request on their part that they're looking for the donation, so.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot, you, you have the floor.
Um, I wa, I wasn't not.
I'll come back.
I was not proposing we just mail a check randomly to anyone. Obviously, we would call and check and see. My thought was, they know this exists and I know, um, from working with nonprofits, that they might think, oh, well, we applied and got money for three years, so they might not give it to us, so they might have not applied because they might think that we don't have it or we wouldn't give it to them again for this year. Um, so, I, I mean, maybe we reach out for the last couple of years, any of the ones, because we also haven't given to the Martin Luther King Scholarship Fund since 2022. Um, you know, there's some other ones on here, so maybe we pick a couple and reach out and we could split it amongst a couple.
Well, the other thing that we're looking at is, we, we're trying not to double dip. And what I mean by that is coming from the council and coming from Groton Utilities and I think Groton Utilities has provided to the Martin Luther King Scholarship Foundation, if I remember correctly. Uh, and I'll have to check on STEPS if they did, but, um, we can, uh, we can look. I can make a couple, we can make a couple phone calls tomorrow. And then, then I'll figure out what I'm gonna do next. I may bring it straight to you or I may wait to the, uh, the committee of the whole on the second Monday. The reason I don't like to do that is because we're up against the end of the fiscal year and no offense, but recently council has, we've had to cancel more than one meeting because I don't have a quorum. So, uh, it would be good if we could donate this money, but, um, I will get back to you. All right, yes, ma'am. Counselor Norris, you now have the floor.
Thank you. I agree with both Deputy Mayor Depot and Counselor Sheffield. Uh, in terms of we as representatives of the community, if we know an organization that we can reach out to fairly soon and ask them or tell them if there's funds available, if they're applying and, and for some reason we did this year, get them to submit an application. If, my view, that would be the best way to go. And also, I would also say, uh, maybe for another time, is if we could have the finance director discuss, um, a mechanism that we could put in place where unused donation or sponsorship, um, general fund money is rolled over into a special revenue account at the end of each fiscal year. Uh, so that can preserve those dollars and not just simply go back to the general fund. But I think that may be a good mechanism to address Deputy Depot's concern, which is mine too. Why, you know, penalize folks, um, when we have the money? And also what the mechanism allows us to do is that, you know, if it's not used every year, five years down the road, we have a bigger pot. And in cases of economic distress, uh, these nonprofits can get a more, uh, sponsorship or donation. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Piazza?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I know last time when they, uh, wrote to us, they had petitioned other places for donations and they hadn't received. Do we know if that's happened? If, we don't know? Okay.
And I was wondering also too, when we're trying to decide on this, if like, say by the end of this week, if counselors know of an organization, then we could send it to you, Mayor, and then we could decide on there just in case there's another organization we may know about or, or somebody may know or they're gonna say, hey, I know this organization, look into it and say, could you apply? And then we could let you know. And then just leave it at by the end of this week. That way, we can get it moving.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting.
Oh, we didn't put a specific dollar amount.
We did. We said a thousand dollars.
Well, I know Deputy Mayor Depot said a thousand, but I don't think we solidified that amount.
Okay.
I heard her say it, but I'm not sure. Yeah.
Well, I thought I got consensus from everybody, but let me go around the room. Do we have consensus for a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Obviously, you're okay. Are you okay now?
Yeah.
Counselor Norris?
Yes, your honor.
Okay, then we now have the amount. So, once again, I'll take a motion to move this resolution to the mayor and council meeting of June 3rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors.